Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day in the city in which we live, guide us this evening as we make our decisions.
Amen.
This is the regular meeting of the Noonan City Council, December the 10th, 2019. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of November the 26th, 2019 before you all entertain a motion to adopt those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion.
Second.
A second, we adopt the minutes as presented, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Tonight, we have two special recognitions or presentations on the agenda. The first is from Mr. Garnet Reynolds on behalf of the Rotary Club of Noonan. Mr. Reynolds, how are you this evening?
Very good, how are you, Mayor?
Good.
Mayor Brady, Councilman, Councilwoman, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Garnet Reynolds, I am the president-elect of the Noonan Rotary Club and here tonight to recognize and thank the city of Noonan and let you know that this year, the Noonan Rotary Club is celebrating our 95th birthday. It's something that we're very proud of and excited to celebrate. For 95 years, we look to uphold our civic responsibilities, to grow and give back to this community and especially put service above of self when we have that opportunity. For 30 of those years, we have held a relationship with the city of Noonan and a leadership and organized role with our July 4th fireworks extravaganza at Drake Stadium. The success of that event would not be possible if it were not for the city of Noonan, the resources that you provide and access to the public safety officials that we have that evening. We're working every year to provide an experience that our citizens look for every year to come to July 4th at Drake Stadium every year. So this evening, on behalf of our President Carol Moore and some over 70 Rotarians that in Noonan and here that have tonight, I would like to thank you and present you with a plaque tonight that basically reads, "In recognition of your partnership for the 4th of July celebration, the city of Noonan on behalf of the Noonan Rotary Club." So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
For those that were here earlier, I did not plan to be here on the budget day, but we appreciate your support, thank you.
He was the only one who asked a question in the budget hearing, is did the Rotary Club still have their funding for the fireworks? No, he did not ask that question. On behalf of the, not only the city council and staff and the public safety officials, but on the behalf of the citizens who enjoy every year going to Noonan High School and seeing the fireworks on the 4th of July, we say thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, next item on the agenda, recognition of our 2019 Noonan Citizen Academy graduates. Mr. Krager has this evening.
Yes, Mayor Brady, members of the council, I'd like to call out some names and ask those individuals who have joined us this evening to stand when I call out their names, recognizing all of those that have gone through the program. We call Noonan Citizens Academy Addie Colb, Craig Jackson, Jesse Tanner, June Francis, Rhea Hayes, Ryan Colb, Scott Frederking, Tori Hanson, Tracy Brooks, and William Johns. These individuals spent their own time, considerable amount of time throughout the year, coming and learning more about the community in which we are lucky enough to serve and in which they enjoy living in. And we oftentimes find that they become wonderful volunteers for years to come. So I invite you back, thank you for your attention, thank you for your good questions. Before we leave this section, I want to thank Ashley Copeland, our communications manager, who's the steward of this program and has taken it and revamped it and done a wonderful job. So if you would, please join me in thanking Ashley and congratulating the 2019 Citizens Academy class members. And they're welcome to stay, we do have small gifts, I think that Ashley's prepared for them, or they may leave, Mr. Jackson. Whatever that choice, they're welcome to stay or leave, thank you, sir.
Well, I want to echo Mr. Krager's appreciation for all of your hard work and dedication to go through the class. Now that we have your email address and cellphone numbers, there are going to be some opportunities to fill vacancies in committees and commissions and authorities that come up through the years. And now you know a lot about Noonan and you'll be a great member of those organizations, those committees and commissions. So we, don't be surprised if your phone rings and we ask for your help in the future. Thank you, okay. Next on the agenda this evening, the appointment to Explore Noonan Coweta, Inc., the three-year term. This, you heard in the budget presentation earlier, Mr. Phillips talked about this. This is the newly formed joint tourism product between Coweta County and the city of Noonan. And we have an appointment to that board and I would like to volunteer for that appointment for the first term. It's a three-year term, as you can tell from your agenda. This is the organizational phase of this particular group and my intention would be to serve the first three-year term. And then, instead of picking someone from the community, allow the council to rotate membership throughout the council on a senior basis, if that's acceptable to everyone. But I, Mr. Phillips is going to be the other city representative from the county, I believe, Michael Fouts.
That's right.
And do we have the other appointment yet?
I think they're doing it next week.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
But I'd like to volunteer, so thank you. Okay, I have a motion to second to place my name and nomination for the appointment to the Explore Noonan Coweta, Inc. And all those in favor, opposed, motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a penning ceremony. This is operations of the city manager, Mr. Phillips.
Yeah, call Deputy Chief Chance, he's going to bring up our most recent promotion, I'm going to spoil his thunder, so.
Mayor, council, thank you for taking a moment to allow us to congratulate Sergeant Schreffer to his promotion to patrol lieutenant. He has 21 years of law enforcement experience, 15 have been with the city of Noonan. He started with us back in 2005, he was assigned at that time, my shift, that I was a sergeant on. Many of the people on my shift were promoted or assigned to special units, leaving me with a very green shift with little experience. David came to us with six years of experience under his belt. I immediately had him hitting the ground running, made him my field training officer. Together, while David was on the shift with me for two and a half years, we molded and built a shift, rising up these young officers, getting them prepared. David brought knowledge and skills with him to the department along with dedication. That dedication spilled over with him trying out for the SWAT team, becoming a member of the entry team. He wanted to test his skills even further, becoming a sniper. And within a short period of time, he became the team leader over the sniper team. In 2012, he became the crime scene investigator and custodian over evidence. In 2014, he was promoted to Sergeant Detective. With that, he investigated felonies and also several murder cases during that period. In 2018, he came back to patrol, bringing that experience with him, sharing that knowledge with his officers and helping build that shift once again. At this time, I'd like to call Sergeant Schreffer forward along with his mom, Ms. Debbie Schreffer, and his wife Amanda, who will pin on his badge, and Lieutenant Bosch.
You're fine.
It's all right.
Thank you, sir.
If he bleeds a little, it's okay. Lieutenant David Schreffer.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, next item on the agenda is mine, I don't have anything this evening. The next item on the agenda, new business, resolution 2020, the city of Noonan meeting schedule, the council. Is there a motion we adopt?
So moved, second.
Motion, second, we adopt the resolution as presented, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. The next is a vendor recommendation and selection for annual audit. You have this recommendation in your packet, are there any questions of staff regarding this? Or any questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, we approve the recommendation for the vendor for annual audit as presented, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. The next is for information only, this is rezoning request, RZ 2019-10, AdviCo Corporation for 2.65 acres located on Ashley Park Boulevard, tax parcel 086-5043-008, we're sending this to the planning commission, this is for information only. The next item on the agenda is for alcohol catering license ordinance revision to section 3-28. You have this information in your packet, and any questions of Mr. Sears or other staff members regarding the alcohol catering license ordinance revision, section 3-28. There are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, we approve the ordinance as presented, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried, thank you. The next is a public hearing for application of alcohol beverage licenses, this is transfer license and licensee representative, CVS Pharmacy at 239 Temple Avenue. The reason for this is a personnel change. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time and ask if there is anyone here who would like to come forward to speak to the issue of this public hearing on application, alcohol application. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing, Miss Dello, is everything in order? I ask if there is a representative here from CVS Pharmacy this evening, thank you very much for being here. I'll entertain a motion on the issue.
So moved.
Motion and a second that we approve the application as presented, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried, do we have?
Skip Jack.
Skip it.
Skip Jack.
Did I skip? Yeah, I'm sorry. We're going to go back to that. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move back up to the agenda. I will call, go ahead and call the question on the motion, second, on the alcohol license, all those in favor? Opposed, motion carried. We'll step back up the agenda to item J, this is consideration of authorizing the execution of documents related to approved real estate auction and the release of known liens. Do you have this information in front of you, Mr. Krager, how are you this evening?
I'm Will, thank you Mayor Brady, members of the council. Beginning in March of this year, the city council directed staff, after a process of identifying certain properties to be included in a list to be auctioned. This body took action on that, we've responded as staff, we engaged a listing agent, Terry Howan Associates, they've gone through the process of hosting the auction, the auction has closed. You have the information in your packet showing you the details of those properties, the bid prices for them, those that contain utility easements that we will retain. And then, in addition to that, I provided you in the agenda, information related to known liens on those properties. As an example, oftentimes, the city will demolish a property or secure a property or even cut grass on a property and put a lien against that property for the value of that. What staff is seeking today is authorizing to Mayor, the mayor, to execute documents related to those properties listed in your agenda that were held for auction as well as to release those known liens upon closing.
Any questions of Mr. Krager?
One quick question, this skipped me earlier. On the letter that you prepared for this, it says it's important to note that the property located at Bull's Road Drive, parcel number N 57-466 was not sold, the city of Noonan will...
Will try again, not only with that letter, but in the future with another auction.
Okay, just to make sure, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, there was a bid received, the bidder could not perform, meaning that he or she was not able to come up with the dollar amount at the time, so it was removed off the list and be put back on a future list. If you recall from that March 2019 council retreat, this body put a grouping of properties to go kind of in waves. So the idea was that as that second wave comes, this property could be included at that time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and we'll also recall, I believe, at that March meeting that we discussed that the funding that comes from, that's generated from the sale of these lots would be dedicated to the Noonan Urban Redevelopment Council. So we want to make sure that whatever motion we have this evening, if it's a motion to approve the authorization of the execution of the documents and the release of the known liens, it would include that those funds be dedicated to the Noonan Urban Redevelopment Council. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, the application of alcohol beverage license transfer licensee. This is another CVS Pharmacy location at 395 Jackson Street, the reason is a personnel change. This is a public hearing that I'll open at this time regarding this issue and ask if there's anyone here that would like to come forward to speak to the issue. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing, Miss Dello, is everything in order? We've already established that we have a CVS representative here, we appreciate you being here, I'll entertain a motion on the issue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, we approve as presented, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. The next item is also a public hearing, alcohol, again, application for beverage license. This is also for CVS Pharmacy, this one is located at 1035 Lower Fayetteville Road. The reason for this, again, is a personnel change. This is a public hearing and I'll open at this time on this issue and ask if there's anyone here that would like to come forward to speak to the issue. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time, Miss Dello, is everything in order? And a CVS representative is here, I'll entertain a motion on the issue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, and a second, we approve the application as presented, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. The next item is also an application for alcohol beverage licenses, this is a transfer licensee. This is for Aldi, located at 1064 34 East Highway. And this is also for personnel change. This is a public hearing on this issue and I'll open the public hearing at this time. If anyone would like to come forward to speak to the issue. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing, is there a representative here today from Aldi?
Yes.
Thank you for being here today, we appreciate you very much. Miss Dello, is everything in order? I'll entertain a motion on the issue.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is, will be handled by Mayor Prokem Jenkins and my firm has a broker who's representing the buyer on this particular property. Thank you, Ms. Jenkins.
This is the second and final reading, ordinance to amend the zoning map for a property located in Land Lots 43 and 54 of the 5th land district, located in the intersection of Bull's Road Drive and Ashley Park Drive, containing 22.456 acres. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The motion carries, the meeting gets turned back over to the mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, this is RZ 2019-08 by Edwards 6 LLC. This is the rezoning request for 2.15 acres on Summerlin Boulevard and the ordinance. Ms. Donovan, how are you this evening?
Doing well, thank you very much. This is a request by John Edwards on behalf of Edwards 6 LLC. They're looking to rezone their property, which is located on Summerlin Boulevard, shown up on the screen from OI-1 to CCS, and they want to construct a restaurant, which would be, The Palmer's is the name of the restaurant. It's currently one in Peachtree City. The tract is currently vacant and sits just north of the new gastroenterology business on Lower Fayetteville Road and also to the east of the Kroger. There are several site constraints on this property, including a private drive, a stream buffer, and a utility easement. If you can look at the concept plan, the next one here, you can see that they have worked around that, on that, and they have everything above where the private drive is and they would be accessed off the private drive. In terms of the eight required standards, I'll give a quick summary of each. Staff felt that this use was suitable in view of zoning and development of adjacent nearby properties. Since the site is pretty much surrounded by commercial and service uses, there is Woodbury Estates, which is going to be across from where the private drive is on here. But we felt like that would still be a good site for the property because those residents who live there could take advantage of the restaurant. The adverse impact, the greatest would be traffic. However, again, this location is accessed on both Summerlin and Lower Fayetteville Road. And Summerlin, as you recall, is signalized on both ends, so we felt that the traffic could be handled. Could it be used as currently zoned? The answer is yes, but it could also be used as a commercial use. Would the project cause excessive or burdensome use of public facilities? All the service providers basically said that they would be able to serve the site without any issues. In terms of the comprehensive plan, the future land use map actually shows this property as future commercial, so this would be consistent with what our future land use map shows. As previously specified, the applicant is seeking a CCS zoning and a restaurant would be consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning. Would the proposed use be supported by newer changing conditions not anticipated by the comprehensive plan? The city completed its full update of the comp plan in 2006 and this shows this property as commercial. Staff does feel that this project shows a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, and general welfare and right to unrestricted use of property. We feel that providing commercial and service businesses around subdivision and other residential areas are key to decreasing traffic and also promoting a live, work, play environment. And people from the link can also take advantage of this. In summary, staff found that the development met seven of the eight standards. Planning Commission held their public hearing on November 12th of this year and voted unanimously to recommend the rezoning with the condition that the final site plan would be consistent with the concept plan that you saw up on the screen earlier. And then, they have included also some pictures, I think there's three, showing what The Palmer's Restaurant looks like in Peachtree City. And that's the report of Planning Commission.
Thank you. Any questions, Ms. Donovan, regarding the Planning Commission's report?
Just a quick question, is it only the one entrance onto that private drive, correct? There's not a second one onto Summerlin or anywhere else?
No, it would be off of the private drive and then, of course, Summerlin, or the private drive access is off Lower Fayetteville Road with a ride-in, ride-out, and also on Summerlin, which has two ends signalized.
Okay, and so I guess the other question I had then was if they're expecting or anticipating the potential of folks that are going to live in that neighborhood to walk to it, they're going to have to walk, then walk up Summerlin and cross somewhere? There's not any crosswalks currently to get into that property, correct?
The engineering department will make sure that they have to meet whatever sidewalks and crosswalks are going to be necessary to make the project work.
Okay, so it's all taken care of, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, this is a public hearing regarding this issue. I will say to the applicant, if you want to come forward and make your presentation, you'll have 15 minutes. At the end of that 15, or if you finish before the end of the 15 minutes, you're welcome to reserve your time. And then, we'll give anyone in opposition 15 minutes to respond.
Thank you.
If you'll identify yourself with the record.
Yes, sir, George Harper with Paramount Engineering, 11 East Broad Street, Noonan, Georgia. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight representing Mr. John Edwards here with Palmer's Restaurant. Hopefully, some of you maybe have eaten at his restaurant in Peachtree City. It's kind of located behind the Outback over on the north side of town. Very nice restaurant, it's more of an upscale, it's got a real nice outdoor area with it. And he's looking to bring that concept to Noonan. This is the sign that we're proposing, it's got a, as you can see, it's got a real nice covered outdoor area as well, a very nice indoor setting as well. There will not be any access off of Summerlin. There's a significant grade change on this property from the Kroger Shopping Center, which would be to the west, if you're looking at the plan there, to our property. So it probably drops, this property is probably about 10 to 12 feet, excuse me, lower than the back of the Kroger property. And also, it does sit below Summerlin Boulevard as well, Summerlin Boulevard is ascending as you go. So, you know, he kind of wanted to design it to where the outdoor area would kind of be secluded and you would kind of have a kind of a private feel when you're hosting parties and that type of stuff. Again, there's a large portion of this property, or a significant portion of this property, probably half an acre or more, that is located in the stream buffers. It'll provide a buffer that would be on the east side of this property, on the east side of that newly constructed road that runs along gastroenterology. And so that would be a nice buffer from the new senior living house housing there and also that parcel that's on the corner of Summerlin Boulevard and Lower Fayetteville. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Counsel, have any questions of the applicant? Anyone? All right, thank you. You reserve the rest of your time?
Yes, sir.
All right. Is anyone here who would like to speak in opposition of this particular rezoning? All right, seeing no one come forward to speak in opposition, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion from the council to accept the report and recommendation from the Planning Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Motion a second, we accept the report and recommendation from the Planning Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion regarding the ordinance with the proffered conditions.
Make a motion to approve with the proper conditions.
Second.
Motion a second, we approve with the proper conditions. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen, thank you for being here. The next item on the agenda this evening is status reports, 33 Hardaway, 280 West Washington, 18 Berry, 15 Elm Street, 6 Glen Street, and 8 Glen Street.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Hope everybody is well. Of the current properties listed on our status report, four are progressing, including 8 Glen Street, which renovations have actually been completed, and they are in the process of scheduling an open house, so that won't be dropping off the list. There are two that are not, 33 Hardaway Street, which will actually be on our agenda for our first council meeting next month. That is a property, as a reminder, that was given a 90-day extension. It's a family sale that there's some, I guess, some difference of opinions on the distributing of the proceeds of a potential sale, and it doesn't look like it's going anywhere. There's been no renovations or updates to the property. And there was a for-sale sign in the front yard that hasn't been taken down, so it doesn't look like there's much going on with that property currently. And then 18 Berry Avenue, there's been no progress with that, but there has been earnest money put down on the property. Mr. Dana Freeman, who is also renovating the properties on Glen Street, has given Mr. Moten some earnest money. They have not finalized a contract. His plan is to start on that project after he gets a contract on one of the houses on Glen Street. I think that's the final update on this. I'd be happy to answer any questions on any other properties.
Any questions, Mr. Burst? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The next, under Visitors, is a request from Southern Riders RC to hold a toy run to begin at 1:00 PM from Harley-Davidson on Highway 16 through downtown Noonan to the Department of Family and Children's Services on Highway 29. You have this request in your packet. Any questions regarding the request? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the request as presented. Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. That does end our regular agenda this evening. Is there anyone here who has come to the meeting for an off-agenda item? This is your opportunity to come forward. All right, seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go around and ask. Mr. Bowe, councilmember, is there anything?
Yes, sir, I have one thing. I have a question, Mr. Phillips. We recently had a structure torn down downtown, we tore it about 1880, maybe 1890. And it was questioned, the staff determined that there was additions to the property, and that was occurred in, after, I believe, 1960. And so they determined, since the additions to the property were 1960, somehow the structure, the original structure of 1880, 1890 didn't come in compliance with having to let city council know to get our permission to tear the house down and the house torn down. My concern is, and I have a perfect example, I have an 1886 Victorian home. I did an addition in 1997, which means if you took staff's criteria, some could come along and tear that house down without city council approving. So I would at least like us to look at the ordinance and clarify, because what happened should have never happened. So I'm asking for staff or for council to support this. It came down, it came down quick, and I've had a lot of calls from my constituents, because I've lived in this district and I represent them, so. And Ms. Jenkins will probably give the calls also, so. But we need to change that, so.
I agree, we need a clarification of that ordinance. When there's any portion, I think, I believe the date was 19...
1940.
40. That anything built before 1940, I think if the ordinance doesn't say that any portion of the property built before 1940, not just the property, but any portion of the property built before 1940, Mr. Sears, can you check on that and see what we've got?
We can clarify that.
Bring it back to us? Any objection from other councilmembers regarding that issue?
I've heard of it.
No need for a motion or a vote, but you've got instruction. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl? I don't have anything?
I do, I've got a couple of things. Why, we wanted to know when we're going to actually talk about our housing study, at some point or another, that we have done, and when we will be able to have a workshop about that.
Okay.
I'm putting it out there because I haven't heard anything.
All right. Will Mr. Phillips push out some dates, and let's coordinate councilmember dates?
Obviously, and into the first of the year, I would imagine, at this point in time.
Well, yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, I want to do that. And then two is, one of the things that, and I briefly mentioned this to Mr. Phillips, is that, you know, with a lot of the zoning changes we've had, I'm concerned about our office institutional. You know, over the years, we've changed several of our office institutional, and I'm, in general, wanting to see an updated zoning map, just so that we can see, you know, over time, what changes have happened within the city. You know, we've had a hard time with some of our office institutional and some of those conversations that we've had over the years about Class A office space, Alba 20, and that kind of thing. But at some point, we are expecting to do those kinds of businesses. We kind of need to have the zoning in place for those. So I really like us to look at that and maybe use this information for some sort of visioning amongst the council. That's one thing we have not talked about in a number of years. And I think it just means that it's about time we do.
Well, it sounds like to me that you're talking about a work session.
Yes, a work session.
The first of the year, so why don't we just go ahead and start talking about our annual retreat?
Right.
That turns into the work session, to combine those and any other issues that we... So, Mr. Phillips, if you'll just go ahead and push those dates out, or ask for dates from councilmembers, when we may be able to do those things, and then we'll come up with a consensus date and plan the meeting, so.
Yeah, a couple of things as well. Yeah, this is the end of the year, right? First of all, Merry Christmas, because we're coming up to that time at the end of the year. Second of all, I want to say thank you to our staff. Our city staff has done an outstanding job this year. We had a luncheon earlier today. We were able to thank them. Most people don't realize all that goes into running a city, from what you see to what you don't see, from above the streets to below the streets. So they've done an outstanding job. I just want to say thank you to them each and every day for what they do. In particular, our fire department, we had a house fire just the other day over in my district, in Stillwood. Unfortunately, it was a complete loss, but thankfully, there was no loss of life. So it was outstanding response from our fire department. Three stations replied, and there was no other structures, no other homes caught on fire, so they did an outstanding job. Just thank you to all of our staff, but, you know, with this in mind, to our fire department as well and our public safety.
Thank you. Councilmember?
Oh, good, thank you.
We do have the need this evening for an executive session for real estate and legal. I'll ask Mayor Pro Tim Jenkins to take us into that with a motion.
A move that we now enter to close session is allowed by a position code of Georgia DQ-14-4 pursuant to advice by the city attorney for the purposes of discussing real estate and legal, and that we in open session adopt a resolution authorizing the directing of the mayor of presiding officer executing affidavit in compliance with position code of Georgia DQ-50-14-4, and that this body ratified the actions of the council taken in closed session and confirmed that certain matters of the closed session were within exception permitted by the open meetings law.
Second.
Motion a second, we go into executive session for legal and real estate. Any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, motion carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you, sir. Merry Christmas, gentlemen.